Thank you so much for being here this evening. I'm Randy Anderson, Superintendent Shannow School District, and it is a great pleasure to share with you this evening the state of the district. We have been spending the last two years working on a strategic plan. In the middle of that strategic plan or at the onset of that strategic plan, we had COVID. A lot of what we're going to talk to you tonight about is our strategic plan pillar number four, which is operations. Inside of operations, we have fiscally responsible, we have human resources, and then we have our operations. What we are going to focus on tonight is solely our operations. We're going to talk to you a little bit about where we are as a district historically with our enrollment and where we are forecasting our enrollment looking forward and what the current status of our four physical plants are and the capacity of those four physical plants. We're going to talk about our activities. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we were looking at a project to get our updated facilities updated at the high school. We still have some significant needs inside of both the fine arts and the athletic side of the house that need to be addressed. And we're going to remind you and share some of those needs and where we're at. And then we're going to have the opportunity to hear where we are as a district financially and how we're positioned to possibly be able to get this work done. So with that, before I move in, I'd like to introduce who I have with me this evening. I have Director of Personalized Learning and Instruction Kirk Crzan, Director of Finance and Operations Josh Swanson, Fine Arts Department Chris Kent, Activities Director Joel Wondra, PE, Weight Room, Al Tamal football coach. So tonight, we look forward to an opportunity to share with information. I am optimistic that we will get through our content and have some time for questioning at the end. If we don't have time for questions at the end, I will ask that you share your questions, we'll write them down, and we'll be creating an FAQ after this evening. We will also, we are recording this this evening, and we will be putting the recording up on the website. It will take us a couple of days to do that, so don't expect it up there tomorrow because we're going to slice it out so that you don't have to watch the entire presentation to find the specific area in which you're interested in. But that will be posted up on the website. And we'll also be talking about where we're going to go moving forward. So as I mentioned, operations, it is imperative for a school district to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers. That is a number one priority as we continue to move forward. For us to be able to do that, we need to present a balanced budget to the board every year. It's part of the conversation that we need to look at is how can we maintain a balanced budget moving forward? We also need to have a long-range facility plan. Just as you have a plan, if you're a homeowner, that says, you know what, my house is 10 to 15 years old, I probably need to start looking at shingle replacement, right? You start to have a conversation about how you're going to budget that. Because if you're replacing a roof, it's not a dollar activity. It's a significant cost. The same thing for a school district. We need to have a long-range facility plan to be able to say, okay, we've got in our budget $2 to $3 million to be able to replace those HVAC units at the high school. To give you an example, one chiller at the high school is a $500,000 ticket item. It's not something that the school district can just consume when that chiller goes out. So we need to take a look at what that looks like. And so to do that, we hired Kraus Anderson this summer to give a full and complete assessment of our district, and we'll get into that in a little bit. What does the enrollment of Shannow School District look like? This is a historical projection from 2008 to 2021. You can see as a school district, we are declining. We've been in a gradual decline since 2017, and we had a significant decline the year of COVID. You might ask yourself, why? It's not just Shannow School District. Across the state, in the last 10 years, we have lost 30,000 students. Eighty percent of the districts in Wisconsin are in a declining enrollment situation. Shannow School District has graduating classes close to 200, incoming classes around 150. That natural attrition as it moves through the district is starting to hit at our middle school and will start to hit our high school. We also know that private vouchers have continued to increase. We are capped out, but our numbers continue to incline. So students that are in our community attending private schools. Our summer enrollment because of COVID, so the summer of 2020, our summer school was marginal, right? Our numbers are built off of our summer school numbers. So because our program in summer school was down significantly, it looks like we have a larger gap in our enrollment in the way that it's forecasted. What we know is that summer school will come back up, but it's not going to come up significantly. We know that our virtual enrollment students and our homeschool enrollments went up exponentially last year, and we've only gained about half of those back. So as we continue to look forward and we look at our enrollment projections, as a school district, we are still in a continual decline. And in the next four years, those bubble classes that I talked to you about, that incoming class of 150 starts to hit the high school, and we start to see our enrollment significantly decline. And using a lot of assumptions that our 4K class sizes are going to maintain and that our high school class sizes are going to maintain, we're anticipating that in the next four years, we're going to lose 200 students. Why is this important? It's important as we look at long-range planning and what the needs are for the district. So the other component to this puzzle that's really important as we talk about and move into our facilities assessment is what physical space do we have and how much physical space do we need? We currently have four plants. Those four plants have an estimated, estimated capacity of 3,300 students. We are forecasting to be at 2,000 students in four years. So one of the questions we have to ask ourselves as a community is how do we prioritize our needs and where do we invest our money? With that, I'm going to turn it over to Josh to talk about our Kraus Anderson report and why it's so important for us to get that facility plan in place.
Thank you, Randy. So as you mentioned, a long-range plan is very important for our strategic plan. And in order to create that strategic plan, we first really needed to take solid inventory of our current plant and see what's out there as far as what's needed in repairs and maintenance in the upcoming years. So we contracted with Kraus Anderson really to get an objective third-party specialist working with our Buildings and Grounds group to determine the upcoming needs of the district. That was done in the summer. Over 400 hours between both Kraus Anderson and our Buildings and Grounds team was spent developing this plan, taking an inventory, categorizing, taking pictures, determining the criticality of different pieces of equipment in the buildings and the structure and the needs of the district going forward. You can see our four sites there. The deferred maintenance categories were built into 17 different categories. I won't get into those details. But really, this comprehensive plan allowed us to develop a plan over the next 10 years to determine what's needed here in 2022 and then also going forward for the next 10 years. So I mentioned the 17 different categories. Here are just some examples of the more significant categories of the assessment. And I guess kind of to back up, why did we even need to have this assessment? Yes, we have our strategic plan. We need to develop our 10-year long-range plan so we can plan ahead appropriately. You might drive past our buildings, be in the buildings, see the classrooms, the gym, library. Things look great from the outside, things look great from the inside. But really, behind the scenes, these are some of the type of things that you may not see. This was at the middle school. These are actually two separate instances of water damage at the middle school. So this kind of helps kickstart the need for our plan. We can't be waiting for water in the basement to fix the sump pump or we can't wait for water to leak from the roof to fix that. We need to plan ahead and avoid those high maintenance costs going forward. So just a brief summary, I'll get into each of the buildings. Hillcrest, this is our newest building. And as you'll see going forward, this is the building with the fewest needs right now. But on the right, you'll see some major deferred maintenance categories. HVAC, electrical, roof, site work, plumbing, all, a lot of routine items that will be needed in the upcoming years. And here are some pictures. I mentioned, you know, when you're in the buildings, when you're at athletic events, you'll see everything looks great. And a lot of it does look great at Hillcrest. You can see, you know, gymnasium is great, classrooms. A lot of different things are on the surface, really nice and functioning well. Brenner is our second oldest building, serves grades three through five. And again, on the right, you can see some of the major deferred maintenance items. Electrical, HVAC, plumbing, roof. You'll see a very common theme across all the major deferred maintenance items at all of our buildings. Again, some pictures, some examples of the items that Kraus Anderson and our maintenance team has identified. A lot of the classrooms, gymnasium look nice, but you can see the roof, some enclosures, windows, some, here's, because the building's a little bit older, some things are popping up that are identified that need to be replaced and maintained a little bit sooner. Middle School is our oldest building in the district. Again, same common deferred maintenance items that we need to address. The track resurfacing tennis courts, these are kind of an area of primary concern. Exterior enclosures, panel replacements, roof repair. We've had several roof and obviously water damage issues that you saw pictures of before. So as the building's aged, these items get longer and more expensive to maintain. And lastly, the high school. Again, your major deferred maintenance items on the right. High school, really at, I don't want to say completely end of life with a lot of the original equipment, but Randy mentioned the chillers. A lot of this is original. We're at about 25 years now. When you think about the useful life for some of the original equipment, that needs to get replaced and pretty quickly here with some of these items. Again, a lot of things look great, but some things are at end of life. Some exterior enclosure, door replacements, some chiller replacements, stadium bleacher replacements. A lot of these need some pretty immediate attention here. So the dollar impact, my favorite topic, of course. This is a summary on the left, a pie chart of the dollar amount of each building. So in total, Kraus Anderson and our maintenance team identified about $26 million of deferred maintenance over the next 10 years. As I'll get into further, we do not have $26 million in our budget to spend on deferred maintenance. Our maintenance budget is about $2 million annually. A lot of the items that Kraus Anderson and maintenance identified are not budgeted every year. So the $10.988 million is upcoming at the high school and middle school at about $7 million. So that's by building breakdown. And the pie chart on the right breaks it down by category. So you can see some of the more significant items. Roof, over $9 million in roof repair and replacements in the next 10 years. Exterior, I'm sorry, earth and site work and interior construction are also some major needs for the next 10 years. One other thing that Kraus Anderson did was they categorized based on priority. So not only does something, they identified if something needed to be replaced or maintained in the next 10 years, they identified if something needed to be more urgent. So they categorized everything in priorities one, two, and three. Priority one being the most urgent and then two and three. So it's really interesting to see, like I mentioned, the high school, about 25 years old now, a lot of the original equipment. They have the highest priority one. The middle school also has a lot of high priority one, again, due to the age of the building, followed by Brenner and then Hillcrest being our newest building. Quite logical that they have more of the priority three that are a little bit further down the road. I mentioned $26 million before. That is factoring in for projected inflation. Present value, $25 million. Obviously, we're not going to take care of all of that tomorrow, but just kind of some perspective that we did build in some inflation, knowing that we're going to have maintenance over the next 10 years. And with that, I will turn it over to Joel.
Thank you, Josh. I'm Joel Wondra. I'm the Activities Director, and I'm grateful tonight to be joined by Coach Al Tamal, who's one of our FIED teachers and runs our Athletic Performance Training Center, as well as Chris Kent, who runs our band department at the high school, and John Aaron, a member, supporter of our fine arts programs. And so together, the four of us will try to highlight some of the greatest needs within our facilities as they relate to supporting our co-curricular programs. I want to just start by stressing the emphasis of our co-curricular programs. So there's that 7:30 to 3:30 PM timeframe where our kids sit in classrooms and receive instruction. Oftentimes, people think of those things that happen outside of the school day as extracurricular activities. I prefer to refer to them as co-curricular because to me, those are extensions of the classroom. The learning that goes on in those places may not be necessarily reading, writing, and arithmetic, but they certainly are important to the overall well-development of our students and helping create well-rounded, prepared students to move into their futures. And so we're very proud of our programs at Shannow Community High School. We think that with our fine arts, our athletics, and our clubs and organization, there's something for every student. And if you ask, I think it may be some of you, if you think about what were your most meaningful memorable experiences that you incurred when you were in school, you probably don't think immediately of sitting in your science class or in a FIED class, but you might think more about, you know, the club that you were a part of or the teams that you were a part of. And so I just want to stress the importance of these activities. And with that, move into talking about some of the facility needs as they relate. So Coach Tamal and I can talk specifically about athletic program needs and the greatest ones that we've identified there. And then I'll turn it over to Chris and John to talk specifically about needs in the fine arts area. In the athletic area, there are several things. I'll start with the stadium and kind of highlight some things that need some attention in our stadium. And I guess I want to start by saying, if you think about what the most visible pieces of our school district are for the vast majority of our community members, it's probably our stadiums and our auditoriums, right? Because that's where they come into our buildings to watch their kids perform. Grandmas and grandpas come in to see the concert or watch their grandchildren play sports. Parents are regular attendees of these events. And so these are important pieces of what we do and how we present ourselves to the community. In our stadium, our bleachers are in need of some attention. They sit on a gravel base instead of a pad. They've settled and shifted. They're made of an aluminum piping construction. They're a bit outdated. They're no longer ADA compliant. Our press box has some definite needs. There's actually some water penetration occurring in the roof area of the press box. Our press box, 25 years ago, press boxes were a lot different, right? Today, with the technology that exists, radio broadcasts, internet access, et cetera, we don't have the electrical or the infrastructure in our press box to support what happens in a modern athletic press box anymore. Our concession stand and restroom, it's a separate building. It needs a facelift. The space, the countertops are worn, the cabinetry is worn, the fixtures in the restrooms need some updating. Our scoreboard is outdated and it's starting to fail. It has gone out on us at times during games. Our outdoor storage, we have a garage for our ATV and some of our larger athletic equipment. It's really not secure anymore. The doors don't close the way that they should. Rodents have found their way in. It makes it very difficult for us to store things without worrying about the damage that will be created. The next area I want to share with you are some needs within our Athletic Performance Training Center. I'm going to ask Coach Tamal to speak directly to that because this is his area of expertise. But you might remember that a couple of years ago, when the district started to identify needs and we went down a path of working with the community, it really started by, from a spot of what can we do about the needs that we have in our weight room? And so, Al, if you want to talk about that?
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, so here's a picture of what we usually, of our class typically looks. And we have four full racks in our weight room right now with four platforms for Olympic movements. I tell the kids that we have, that we don't take a backseat to anybody in terms of our athletic performance program, and I really believe that. So no matter what we have, we're going to find a way to go to that or they make it work. We have replaced things here and there, but as you can see, we're kind of, we're falling behind and it's becoming out of date with plates chipping and we're having to go through a lot more things a lot quicker. We were having to, we planned to hopefully be in a new facility at some point, so we didn't replace anything for that for one year, and it showed. We started to fall behind on replacing things. And I think it was, I think it's a problem if the kids are saying, get the tools so we can tighten the dumbbells. That's not something we should have to do. Typically, we put through about 100 kids, 100 students a day just through class alone, about 20-ish, give or take, kids per class in sports, weight training or weight training. And again, we try to do everything groups of four, our groups of four, so we're spread out as much as we can, but this is us spread out, okay? This is only half the room. So we're definitely lacking in some space. In our summer programs, space-wise, we're having to, it was a good problem to have because we had so many kids and we're having to set up mobile weight rooms, we were calling them, out in the mezzanine to utilize the space and keep kids spread out. We would get upwards of high 30s or low 40s kids per session. When I first became our, did our summer program, that first year, we had seven kids and eight kids and 15 kids and I think 19 kids for sessions. Since then, we've gone climbing into the 30s, high 20s, and I think we have one at 17. That was our lowest number last year, okay? We have kids that want to work. We have kids that are doing a great job. And I think that we need to look at upgrading our equipment to match that. I think ownership-wise, having things that are custom or branded towards Shannow would be awesome. You know, we've got a plan to at least look at some things replacing in the next few years, but those are just small things. And who knows what's going to go in that amount of time. And then when we look at after-school sports programs, we've done a great job of pushing to get our coaches, to get our kids in the weight room. So in addition to that, 100 kids that we have during the school day, sometimes we get up to 150 kids total. So we'll get, depending on the day, with sports teams that come in, you know, Wednesdays. Somehow, we fit in this weight room, we fit three varsity teams in here, with swimming, wrestling, and varsity, boys varsity basketball. All is in here at one time. How, it's really difficult, but they all just know exactly the area that they're on. It does take some creativity and moving equipment around to be where, to only utilize what they're supposed to be using, but it happens. It's not ideal. I think it'd be great for us to continue to advance our program if we had more space to have more teams and get more kids through. Because it's, we have kids that want to work and they're working really hard. And I think we've done a really nice job, at least since, I can only speak to the time that I've been here and working with them directly, but it's, there's definitely a need for it. And I think upgrading our stuff sooner than later would be, serve us really well.
Thank you, Coach. We've had a great deal of success in our athletic program. We're seeing some of the momentum, and we believe a lot of it can be attributed to the hard work that's happening in our Athletic Performance Training Center. One of our most successful programs of late has been our wrestling program. That obviously with success brings excitement, and so our numbers have grown in our wrestling program to the point where we no longer really can safely practice in our space that we have. At one point, we grew up to about 40 wrestlers in a space that really can accommodate maybe 25. And so we really have to, again, coaches have to be really careful about kids not running into one another or being on top of each other spacing practices out. Another issue with our wrestling space is that it also is a space that other teams use. And especially in the winter months when wrestling is going on, you can see in that bottom picture, our baseball and softball teams come up for their open gyms and they've got to run out the batting cage nets on top of the wrestling mats. So now I'm taking batting practice in there and I have to hit balls and they end up hitting off of the mats, which causes increased wear and tear on that. But again, that problem is created just because we have to share a single space for multiple activities like that. It's just not that conducive to that. We always struggle with storage. There's several pictures here that just kind of exemplify. The wrestling mats for competition are stored in the hallways just because there's no other space for them. In the picture on the right, that's our hallway up at our mezzanine when we had to expand our wrestling space this year to accommodate more kids. A lot of the FIED equipment that's stored up there just had to simply be moved to a hallway. So kids are walking past this on a daily basis. At the bottom, it shows you that when the school was built, I'm not sure if much thought was put into storage. So over the years, we've created homemade storage in our gymnasium for our volleyball equipment and FIED equipment. And those items aren't always the most secure, and they also don't provide necessarily enough space for all that equipment. So we struggle with those kinds of things. And then outdoor, as I mentioned, some of our larger equipment, we just don't have the secure space for those as well. And the last thing I'll talk about athletic-wise is our shower spaces in our locker rooms. When the school was designed, they were designed to have a shared shower space for two separate locker rooms. So that locker room that you see there, there's a door on one side that goes to one locker room and a door on the other side that goes to another locker room. So on a night when we have a game night, we have a guest on one side and our team on the other side. And for security reasons, I need to drop a gate on one side or the other, okay? To keep the two teams separate from one another, to make sure people aren't going into somebody else's things and rummaging, et cetera. And so as good hosts, we leave the gate up on the guest side so the guests have access to the locker rooms, but our students after a game don't have access to the shower space. And it's just a problem with the original design that we would like to correct. The other thing I'd point out to you in this picture is 25 years ago when the high school was built, it probably was culturally acceptable for most people to shower in a gang-style shower room. Today's world, that's not something our students are comfortable with. Kids are a little bit different with that today. And so if you think about college dormitories now, individual stalls for showering to provide that level of privacy. I think that's something that would be important for our kids as well. So with that, I would like to turn the stage over to Mr. Kent and Mr. Aaron's to highlight some of the needs in our fine arts area.
We have, we really do have some outstanding programs within the fine arts, within the fine arts area. And we have a full orchestra program, which is incredible for a school our size. I mean, we have orchestra, we have band, we have choir, we have all three. The orchestra program starts with Dan O'Connell at the middle school and then comes up to Jill Solcic. And Jill's programs receives, I mean, they, they're outstanding. They receive her superior ratings at Soul and Ensemble. And she just had sent four students to the State Honors Orchestra this last year. She's brought in people like Mark Woods and done things like that on using the facilities we currently have. We have an excellent growing choir program with Mr. Matthew Fots, who is at both middle school and the high school. And Mr. Alex Conan also teaches, he has a theater tech class that he teaches, and he also does the fall play and spring, sorry, fall play and the musical, which is currently going on. And we'll show some pictures of where that really needs to be held. And then we have a spring play that's directed by Matty Stever.
So our band discipline, that's like a big thing, actually has within that six different disciplines, let's see, what, seven different bands? We have two concert bands, pep band, marching band, we have two jazz bands, and we have a pit orchestra opportunity for kids to perform with our performing arts students. The average band student can enjoy in Shauno and can enjoy over 20 performances a year if you include your marching band, your pep bands, the regular concerts that they can be a part of. So it's an incredible amount of opportunity. And like our, we're really blessed in Shauno because with our orchestra and band and choir programs being credited, additionally, our jazz program is accredited class in Shauno. It's not extracurricular like in most schools. And these kids travel. They've seen many parts of the United States, our orchestra, choir, bands. They've performed in the Disney parks, they've performed on the East Coast. Our jazz band has performed and won in Chicagoland area, University of Louisville, Purdue University, Wisconsin-Éclaire, where else? Greeley, Colorado. Great opportunities for our kids and not all of them are co-curricular. So it's a wonderful draw to have a music program like we do in Shauno. And it's interesting because our programs are now at the point, they've been built up over the years, to the point where recently, well, a few years ago, we traveled to Louisville, to Louisville University, and when our band took the stage, they actually pronounced Shauno correctly, which in itself is a win right there. So, and with that though, much like the length of my hair, band and music has changed over the last 25 years. When we built the school, boy, it had some good rooms, some good space, but the program itself has changed, just like in the athletic side. It's no longer just show up, do some practices and go to some games. I mean, there's so much more that goes with it and our space requirements have changed and we're going to highlight a few of those right now.
This picture that's up there is actually from this past December where we put every music student up on that stage at one time, every music student in high school. And you can see, the stage is packed. You can also, and I'll just point out, one of the things we're going to talk about, you can see the acoustical shelves there. There are three, or three there and then there are three over on this side. That stage was meant to be filled side to side with those when it was built. John touched on some of the accomplishments that we've had and music is not about, music is not about winning trophies, but there is, there's nothing, and all the athletic people in here know this, there's nothing like riding back with a group that has done its best, who has performed its best or played their best. And knowing that they've done that and they've got a physical representation of what's happened, of what they've done. So. Storage needs. This is one of two hallways that's full of just, of just equipment. And there was also a picture back at the beginning that was showing, that showed a big yellow tin can that's outside of the theater. That was the temporary solution to the storage problem. Well, that's full and we got two hallways that are full as well because there isn't, there's not room on the wings of the stage to store all of this and still put on productions. This is, this is our scene shop. This is the ceiling of our scene shop where you're supposed to be able to build different parts for plays and musicals and so you're supposed to be able to build them in here and then roll them out. That's part of what you're supposed to be able to do. Well, we have, with all the programs, there are instruments, uniforms, costumes, props, all of these different things that we have had to find room for to store. Because if you produce a musical, you're looking at, to produce a musical on the downside, it's 10 grand and the musical is self-supporting for the most part as far as money. Well, if you don't have to go and buy costumes all the time, obviously that's a savings, that's a huge savings. But these are hanging up in the scene shop.
These are made, so I see some performing arts parents out there and some of you have helped out, like say our spring musical, fall plays, spring plays, things like that, set building. We, this is our scene shop. It no longer, we no longer can build in our scene shop. There is no room for tools, anything in our scene shop, which then means that we have to build out on stage, which in the last 10 years, our maintenance department is tearing the hair out because it literally destroys the dust and the dirt gets in the HVAC, it destroys the actual stage itself. So we're really running into some issues there. And the other thing too is with the way we currently have to run our programs with everything being on top of each other, when it comes to say building props, right now we have to wait until the last of the Christmas concerts to be able to start building set equipment for the spring play and it's just around the corner. And this is all volunteer, these are parents from the community that come in and help build things. Well, they're given a very, very short window to be able to accomplish this, which kind of stresses them out, which then we get fewer and fewer volunteers willing to help us pull off these programs. And we need to find that ability where we can start building our props way ahead again for the next event because since everything now is overlapping.
This is backstage storage. We built this close, well, about 18 years ago. And what it does is it's, there's storage back there for different parts for building sets and also for the coral risers, and this takes up the back three feet of our stage.
Which is also the fourth electrical. For people who have ever done anything on stage, we're missing a whole part of the stage that we cannot use at all and haven't been able to for about 18 years.
Yep. We're, we're using practice rooms for storage. You know, hallways, hallways are not meant to store items. Practice rooms are intended to help students learn and get better at their craft and this is what we're having to use so many of our practice rooms for is just for storage. Organized storage is safer and much more efficient. Okay, so fine arts needs, why do we need these updates and improvements? Well, as we talked about, the building is 25 years old. The wiring has never been updated. The soundboards have been updated. Some of the sound equipment has been updated, some of the lighting equipment has been updated. However, just like, just like we were talking about the scoreboard, the way the lighting system is set up, sometimes the lights don't come on and sometimes they come on by themselves because the dimmer packs that we're dealing with are way out of date. The, and this is in front of the sound booth and it's, we move the stuff out in front of the sound booth to make it easier for everyone to hear, for the people who are ringing sound to hear. You know, you look at this, this is the wiring in front of our sound booth. We've got wires running out of the booth in order to run what we need to run instead of, instead of having everything where it should be and run that way. I'll just go back. So I'll touch on, so I've touched on the lighting, the sound, the acoustics, I touched on with the shells. And the stage was originally built to have clouds. So acoustically it was, acoustics are, it's physics. And so when, when the theater was designed, it was designed to have architectural clouds and the rigging was put in, the clouds were never put in. We were supposed to have 17 shelves to go around the entire stage and enclose it. We only have the six shelves and those are at least 35 years old. I've been here 30 years and they were here when I got here. And we moved those over from the middle school. And of course, the additional storage that we need just to function correctly. The recording space, we'll get to in a minute. Humidity control, it goes to the HVAC, but it's tremendously important. Need the humidity control in the music department to keep instruments playable for the kids and to save money on repairs. I took this picture because this is what Jill did with instruments as a teaching project for her kids, but these were instruments that were no longer viable. They had cracked and been repaired so many times, they weren't used, they couldn't be used anymore. And this happened a lot because the humidity varies from 75% in the summer to, we're at about 25% right now or lower, between 20 and 25%. Wood instruments crack at that.
It's the same as the wood shop in school. The humidity is too high, too low, your projects are ruined. I believe just last week, couple weeks ago, I think we had kids putting wet paper towels in their instrument cases to try to control the humidity of their.
For me, and that's what I have to do with my kids. Yeah. So, and tens of thousands of dollars in repair and in instruments, instrument replacement. My jazz band, as John has stated, we have been very, very successful, especially over the last 13 years. This is my rehearsal space. This is part of my room. This is where I had to put it when we moved in and I'm working here in a 25 by 20 foot space. Those curtains that are up on the wall came, are part of a curtain that actually started on fire on the stage one year. And so I had these made in order to adjust the acoustics so the kids could rehearse and actually hear themselves and get better because of the space that I was put in.
On the subject of curtains, our curtains currently have to be fire-tested. New curtains aren't constructed that way anymore and new curtains, we no longer would have to have fire-tested or worry about them blowing up in flames during the show.
Yeah. It was interesting. It was fun. Okay, going to the, going back to the theater, an orchestra pit. The pit was, the stage was actually designed to have a pit and then that was pulled when it was built. What we have to do is we have to take like the first, the first five rows in the middle section become useless. They're gone. They're not usable. And at least two rows on either side, you eliminate that and it all goes in front like this. I was in that thing for 18 years. And what it does, but the side effect of that is, means the kids can't be heard on stage the way they're supposed to. You can't mic correctly. You can't do any of those things correctly because the pit is out in front instead of underneath where it should be. And this is, this is a huge thing.
Our kids perform very well. The sound projection isn't there, literally just goes all over the room, which then creates what a lot of people think is a bad sounding musical instrument and it's really not.
And just like the athletic programs, these programs are life-changing for some students. This is a picture by the way of Jill's concert with Mark Wood, where she had all the middle school and high school students on it. This is a quote from a former student of several of ours in here. And so being involved in music, specifically jazz, led to me getting multiple scholarships and you can read that whole thing. The part that gets me is that I never even thought about attending college because I couldn't afford it and I didn't think I belonged there. So, you know, these, whether it's athletics, whether it's, whether it's one of the fine arts, it doesn't matter. They're life-changing for so many of the students that we, that we encounter. And like Joel said, what do you remember from your own high, you know, own high school years? I know what I remember. I remember being on the track, I remember being on the stage. I remember being on the football field. That's what I remember. So.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over.
Next topic on our agenda are COVID or ESSER funds. So you may or may not be aware, every school district in the state has received or will be receiving three different rounds of ESSER funding. Really, it's geared towards COVID mitigation, safely reopening our schools. We have been in person, but with that comes a lot of different requirements. Our first round, we received a little under $400,000. That has all been spent. We use that for masking and plexiglass and subs and mental health grants and really just a lot of different things to get the school open safely. Round two, a little over 1.5 million dollars. Here's where we invested in some technology and some infrastructure upgrades for the virtual learning and to make our wifi better. And round three, about 3.4 million dollars. This has not been used yet. Round three is a little unique where there comes with additional requirements. You can see 20% EBIS requirement, that's evidence-based intervention strategies. So of our 3.4 million dollars, a little under 700,000 needs to be spent on some, what the layperson calls learning loss. So there's a variety of different ways we can spend our money to meet those EBIS requirements. We're not limited to 20%, but we must spend at least 20%. The other requirement that we're starting to satisfy today is community input. So we've identified some areas where we could spend our round three ESSER funds on, but we want to get the community input to see if we're on the right track. So a survey will be going out shortly to address these items, really to see if the community agrees with these items that we plan to use the funds on and see if there's anything else that we're missing. Some examples of the round three that we have identified that we'd either like to continue or start. The all-day four-year-old kindergarten program has started this year. We've used round two for that. We'd like to continue that. By, by all accounts, this has been a successful program so far this year, so we could use round three to continue that program. Technology coaches, professional development for staff, additional instructional resources for student success and mental health support. Those all fall under the umbrella of our strategic plan of the student success. Again, the other option is to focus on the operations, a lot of the conversations today, and that would be under our HVAC. Again, I previously mentioned that some of the maintenance needs, HVAC was a big, big line item from our Carl Sanderson report. So we could take, take care of a majority of our HVAC needs with our ESSER funds. So those are kind of the two different umbrella options that we are looking at, but again, survey will be going out shortly, so we would love to get everyone's input on that. The financial state of the district. So just for some information, our annual operating budget is about 40 million dollars. That is our general fund, our special education fund and our food service fund. Of that 40 million dollars, about 2 million dollars is, has been budgeted for maintenance. That has relatively stayed flat over the last few years. So if you remember, our K.A. assessment identified 25, 26 million dollars over the next 10 years. That's above and beyond our 2 million dollars. Declining enrollment results in declining revenue. So the way school districts are funded, we are allowed to generate revenue at approximately $10,000 per student. The state caps that. We are not the federal government. We cannot just print more money or tax more money whenever we feel like it. The state is very clear on the limits of our revenue. When our enrollment declines, our revenue declines. When our revenue declines, our expenditures need to decline. However, the district has been very. However, uh, the district has been very, uh, fiscally responsible in recent years. Uh, debt reduction is one key item I'd like to point out. Uh, the, the debt originally, um, projected to be paid off in 2031, that has been accelerated. We've saved some interest, uh, we've been planning ahead. That is now expected to be paid off in 2027. Uh, we have some plans in the works to actually accelerate that even further to 2025. Meaning that the school district would be debt-free in 2026. So with that allows us to pay for a lot of the projects, the maintenance, the fine arts, the athletics, uh, that you heard about tonight. There's two different avenues. One is fundraising. The board has expressed interest in fundraising for some of these projects. I don't have a dollar amount or a percentage of the project that I wanna tell you that, you know, we want to fundraise right now. Uh, but it's an avenue that we want to explore. We know other school districts locally have had some success, um, with fundraising for some of these type of similar projects. So we know that it can be done. The other avenue is a referendum. A lot of times when you hear a referendum, you just assume more taxes, um, higher tax bills. That's actually not the case here. Um, due to our strategic planning with the, the debt reduction, the way, uh, the district has been fiscally responsible, the referendum that we would propose to pay for the fine arts, the athletic, um, some of these maintenance items, that would come at a no tax rate increase to the taxpayers. Uh, and I think that's really exciting. That's a great opportunity for the district to, to pay for some of, some of these items without putting an additional burden on the taxpayers. So that is all I had. With that, I will turn it back over to Randy.
Thank you, Josh, and thank you, team. Um, we wanted to share with you kind of the state of the district and where we are and what it looks like moving forward. We really need to hear from the community in the next three months. We have a lot of opportunity. Our fine arts programs, our athletics programs, we've talked about our career opportunities that we have inside of our CTE, wheelhouse for our students. As we continue to look at those pieces, we want to ensure, even though we are in a declining enrollment situation, that we are providing the opportunities for our students to move forward. And we're positioned financially to be able to do that. So this is a win-win for us and we want to be able to meet the needs of the community. We've created a stakeholder group. We have 20 business, parents, clergy, uh, service organizations represented. And we have 20 staff members from every personnel group. We are bringing these people together on January 31st. So we'll have 40 people helping us drive and identify what our priorities are. Seeking the input from the community to say, here are the things that we need to move forward. We have needs. And we now need to prioritize those needs and establish how we want to move that forward. We do have two guests with us this evening from ISG. Sue Peterson, if you want to stand up and wave and I'll have you introduce your colleague.
Yes, I'm, I'm Sue Peterson. Um, I'm a project strategist with ISG. So a lot of, you've done a lot of great, um, you know, laid great foundation. But our work would be to help guide you as a community through the process of those priorities. Um, what makes the most sense, um, as a, a community moving forward. And then we would help with that community engagement piece with those decisions.
Sure. And I'm Danielle Kerpy. I'm a land team architect and urban designer, um, of the Green Bay office. Uh, I support a lot of the facility assessments, but also the planning of the site. So understanding what your needs are, um, whether it's entries or site movement, safety, how to make sure the students and then the, um, after-school events can, can coexist safely and best utilize those places. And then long-term planning for, um, your site needs, whether it's athletics or, um, recreation, whatever.
So we'll meet on the 31st and we'll continue to have opportunities through the spring, really tight by the end of March. We're looking to be able to come back to the board to say, here's where our community is at and this is what we would like to do, continuing to move forward. At the end of the day, the question is on the table. Do we or do we not go out to, for a referendum to be able to support that we're, the work that we're doing here? Think the important piece to come out of this is that we are able to do that and maintain the mil rate. That is huge for us as a school district with that opportunity. So with that, we do have five minutes. So again, thank you guys, really appreciate everything that we've done. We have an amazing district, a lot of opportunities moving forward. But I'll turn it over, if we can't answer the question tonight, we'll take it and get the answer back to you.
Uh, for some of the construction, I specifically like the concession stand and the storage building at the middle school. Um, has any consideration been given to funding that through the building trades program at the high school? Those are going to be high-end, huge projects. Do you have a talent pool in the, in the school and they're looking for experience? Has that been talked over and off?
Those are all opportunities that we can have conversation. We've got Mr. Brown here tonight. Um, I think those are pieces that we want to be able to look as we go forward. Absolutely, leverage the talent within and showcase it, right? Great suggestion. Other questions? Well, if not, there's nothing better than a gift of time. Thank you guys so much for, for being here tonight. Um, appreciate it, please go out, share the message. Like I said, this is gonna go up on our website. You'll be able to click on the component that you're most interested in. Also, the community catalog, the community education catalog comes out in January. My front page of that will be all about this work and how we're going to continue to move it forward. So that will be out. A survey's coming out shortly by the end of January that's gonna talk about how do we prioritize? What do you see as priorities as a community? We need your input. We want to hear from you. More than anything, we want to understand where our priorities are and how we want to be able to move this forward. So thank you so much, have a great evening and, um, we'll see you soon.